Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, October 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. And in accordance with the provisions allowed by Chapter 20 Of the Acts of 2021, the October 28th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Planning Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lake camp. Do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecamp.tv backslash. For the record, tonight in attendance for the planning board, myself, Mark Knox present, I have Barbara Mankowski present, Michelle McCracken present, and Jack Lynch present. Peter Conroy unfortunately cannot make it tonight. Because of the results of the storm recently, Kathy Murray, our clerk is present. And the first item on our agenda is a public hearing to amend the town's general and zoning bylaws. And delete the words Board of Selectmen or Selectmen in each place they appear. And insert in place the words Select Board. So I'm going to read the public notice. Lakeville Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw and Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, October 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. By way of a virtual platform. Virtual meeting instructions can be found on the agenda located on the Town of Lakeville Planning Board webpage. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interest parties with an opportunity to comment on the following proposed amended amendment to the Lakeville zoning bylaw. Delete the words Board of Selectmen or Selectmen in each place they appear in the town's general zoning bylaws and insert in their place the words Select Board. A draft of the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw may be viewed at the Town of Lakeville Clerk's Office in Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347 by appointment only. Amendments are also available for review on the town's website. Planning Board members, Mark Knox Chairman, Peter Conroy Vice Chair, Jack Lynch, Michelle McCracken, Barbara Mankowski. The postings were on October 14th, 2021 and October 21st, 2021 for the notice for tonight's public hearing. Just as a formality, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the text of the entire changes of the bylaws.
One second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
So motion carries unanimously. Give a brief description of some of the full text. That at town meeting of the words Board of Selectmen or Selectmen in each of the following places appear the town's general zoning bylaws and insert in their place Select Board. With the deletions noted in strike through and additions in bold and underlined. So several sections, Section 6.7 Site Plan Review. Both sections of that will have Board of Selectmen removed and replacement Select Board. Section 7.0 Special Regulations subsection 7.1.7.11. The same strike through and bold replacement of Select Board on through the entire town's zoning bylaws. And the draft of the proposed amendment zoning bylaws, Town Hall as written in the Does anybody have any discussion on this?
Barbara? I'm very, I'm very excited. I think it's time to take, to change the gen, make it more gender neutral. So I'm happy to see that progressive motion to change it to Select Board. I'm all in favor.
Very good. And Michelle, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I believe since the recodification project that's ongoing, if this is accepted at town meeting, it's not going to cost, cost the town any additional funds to have this done. It's just going to be rolled into the recodification process. So I think that's, that's a plus. So.
Excellent. How about yourself, Jack?
I mean, I think mindful of this current atmosphere of inclusiveness and diversity, I think it's, it's time. I think it's well done.
Agreed. So I guess at this time I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval at town meeting of this zoning bylaw change.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Anywood, like a recommendation. Actually, I'm not sure if we'll make direct recommendation. We just need to hold a public hearing. Because we didn't propose the bylaw, but we may. I'll find out that from the town administrator, but at this time I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the town's general and zoning bylaw change of Selectmen to Board of, to Select Board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the hearing. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Before we go too far and not to force redundancy, but did I technically open the hearing properly?
Question for Kathy, right?
Yeah, I don't think you made a motion to open it. No.
Okay, so we're going to do that again. Make sure it's proper. Because we don't want it to be wrong at town, town meeting. So so Kathy, should I read the public hearing notice and then motion to open or a motion to open and then read the hearing?
Yeah, open and then read it.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing or zoning bylaw change regarding the deletion of the words Board of Selectmen or Selectmen. Insert in the place Select Board.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries. Public hearing is opened. I'll reread the public hearing notice. The Lakeville Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw and Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, October 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. By way of a virtual platform. The virtual meeting instructions can be found on the agenda located on the Town of Lakeville Planning Board webpage. Purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the following proposed amendment to the Lakeville zoning bylaw. Delete the words Board of Selectmen or Selectmen in each place they appear in the town's general and zoning bylaws and insert in their place the words Select Board. A draft of the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw may be viewed at the Lakeville Town Hall, I'm sorry, Lakeville Town Clerk's Office in Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347 by appointment only. Amendments are also available to be viewed on the town's website. Anywood members are named and the two dates of the postings of the public hearing are October 14th, 2021 and October 21st, 2021. So again, as a formality, I make a motion to waive the reading of the text of the entire zoning and general bylaws.
One second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle? Jack? Myself. Motion carries unanimously. So everybody saw the first time. I'm, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of this zoning bylaw change.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries. I make a motion to reclose the public hearing for zoning bylaw change regarding Select Board.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And myself. Affirmatively, the public hearing is now officially closed because it was properly opened that time. Next item on our agenda is a notice of a public hearing. Which at this time I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for allowed uses and special permit uses in the underlying districts shall remain allowed by right or special permit as designated in Sections 4.1 Table of Use Regulations.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to open the hearing. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Okay, I'm going to read the public legal notice for the public hearing for the second bylaw change. The Lakeville Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw and Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, October 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. By way of a virtual platform, the virtual meeting instructions can be found on the agenda located on the Town of Lakeville Planning Board webpage. Purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the proposed amendment to the bylaw Section 7.4 Special Permits subsection 7.4.6 Specific Uses by Special Permit Marijuana Uses subsection A by the addition of the following. All Allowed Uses and Special Permit Uses in the Underlying District Shall Remain Allowed by Right or by Special Permit as Designated in Section 4.1 Table Use, Table of Use Regulations. A draft of the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw may be viewed at the Town, the Lakeville Town Clerk's Office in Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347 by appointment only. Amendments are also available to be viewed on the town website. All Planning Board members' names are listed on the public hearing notice and those dates of the postings for the public hearing were also October 14th, 2021 and October 21st, 2021. My understanding of this bylaw change is basically a housekeeping thing to clean up the bylaw. Is there any other discussion?
Why is it by right? Do you know?
I do not know specifically. It's either by right or special permit, maybe because by right. If it's
It was transferable permit or something like that?
Yeah. If, if, because I believe the host community agreements are based on the address, not on the owner. So once a special permit may be granted to an address, it's by right. Is, that would be my understanding, but I don't want to say definitively that that's a legal opinion. That's my best explanation. Any other discussion?
Do you happen to know who, I mean, this has already gone through council, right? I mean, who made the recommendation that it originally would be changed? We have a committee doing that?
I believe this is something that was picked up by council. Or again, I mentioned the zoning overlay map. Kathy, do you have something? You just muted.
Yeah, I think it was the Attorney General. Because it was, I think, because I think that was submitted by Lill. I think it was unclear in the overlay, in the overlay district that the underlying uses that were allowed by right, it wasn't clear that they were still allowed. So I think it was just to kind of clarify that.
That makes perfect sense. And I did confirm with Lorraine, it was Serpeth that cleaned up what Perrin's Inc. had worked on. So we do have a map someplace. Okay, cool.
So, so the underlying use by right is not necessarily marijuana. It was the other industrial use or whatever is in that location.
Cool.
So if there is no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion for the Planning Board to recommend approval at town meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Recommend approval at town meeting. And so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for this bylaw change.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
So motion carries unanimously. And that public hearing is also closed. Next item I have on the agenda. Signed bylaw. Which, Michelle, you sent us a copies of the latest version of the updated Redline copy.
Yeah.
I guess the only discussion that I want to bring to it tonight is we had talked about trying to put some hours of operation on here. We didn't do that yet, did we?
If you go down, it's it is there. I added it. I'm not sure if this is where it should be added. But I added it where Nate had put ad requirements for the grant of special permit and I just kind of numbered them. So I just kind of four items so far. Not sure the best way to put these in. If it should be another way, I think I'd have to look to see what other bylaw items, the way that they're done.
So I guess the only reason that I would want to take that out from the special permit section is that may negate the control on existing signs because they don't require a special permit because they're pre-existing. So I just
Okay.
I don't know if we could make a section that basically says requirements or regulations or electronic signs.
Okay.
And just put that in there. And then the other part of the discussion, I guess, is does the 11:00 PM and the 6:00 AM work for every business?
Well, I certainly think it does in Lakeville. I mean, I'm out of the house plenty of days before that time. It's very dark and certainly coming home, there's nothing open after nine, 10 o'clock at the latest. So I think those are reasonable hours. Given how this community is now, you know?
Yep, I just, I'm just trying to think of if obviously a business could turn it off earlier than 11:00 PM if they felt so fit. Again, I'm just trying to think if there's any kind of a loophole or any reason why it should be on later or is there any reason why we shouldn't make it earlier? Or, or do we want to try and state that 30 minutes after business closes?
Um no, because business hours we can't control. If a business decides they're going to stay open, I don't know that we have the ability to dictate. But my thinking is, Mark, if we had, let's think of the example, if we had a medical facility come in, let's say we had an urgent care and they need to leave their sign on. Would they would just go through ZVA for something like that? Right? To get an exception for our existing laws.
Well, I think in this exercise, we want to make the Planning Board the special permit granting authority.
Okay, so they'd be coming back to us and asking, hey, can we have a 24 hour because it's justified. We're a medical facility with an urgent care. You know?
Well, I think you're right, Pop. I think those type of instances should be on all night, but we don't need to have liquor store license stores and variety stores and TruCheese and all those signs on all night long. I don't see the purpose of that.
So I don't, I don't think that you can grant relief if it shall be turned off during the overnight hours from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. You have to make it so that you have to write at the end of that unless by special permit.
Yeah, then I think we should because we may end up with a medical, medical facility or something like that.
Yeah.
May I just add something though? So these are the requirements for electronic signs. So this is not saying that there's no lit up signs. There's no lighting available. This is just for those moving light signs. So I don't know.
We could include that as all illuminated signs of any type, electronic or backlit.
Like tamarack wines and spirits, that sign is not a moving sign, but it's, it's a lit sign and I don't see the purpose of it being on after hours.
Well, so I was just trying to say that if there's an urgent care that's got a light shining on it, that's different than a backlit electronic sign. So I'm just saying there, there would be ways of illuminating a sign like that without having the light emitted emitting diodes or whatever you want to call it.
I mean, can you say that the signs should be turned off after no operating hours and those that want to have it continued on such as urgent care, critical care should be, get us, get a special waiver or permit from us to have it on. Mark, you guys, you guys know better about that than I do.
I, I think that that's the way it should go and the the lighted signs should be turned off at 11:00 PM and turned back on at 6:00. Unless they have a special permit for either 24 hour operation or whatever. And again, I think that that gives you broader control over signs that are lit at night if you include all of them rather than just one type.
Like this isn't
They're leaving an opening for a loophole.
Right.
Yeah. Is there a critical care right there on 18 across from CBS? I mean, I would think those are the people that would want to be on.
And they are, but they're off, they closed. They're not open 24 hours a day.
Oh.
I like the idea of adding it in as, you know, exceptions of by special permit.
Right. I mean, these animal hospitals, when you, if your pet gets sick at night, you have to take it to the hospital. The sign should be on so the people know where the hospital is.
Yep.
Having, having had done that at three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Are there any other types of establishments that you think would be allowable or that we would allow to have a sign on overnight sides? Some sort of a medical facility?
Medical or veterinarian? No, I don't see.
Yeah, I think that's it. I think veterinarian hospitals.
Why don't you just make it not allowed unless you're a 24 hour medical or
veterinarian.
Or, you know.
Medical related.
Well, by special request.
You don't want the guy that makes syringes because he makes medical parts to be, even a sign on all like, you know, I think it needs to be medical care or medical emergency services or some, some sort of language that denotes that they're providing an actual medical service 24 hours a day.
You know, you say that, you know, others that need, you know, apply for a special request. I mean, I can't think off the top of my head, anyone else that would, but you know, if you want to have your lights on, you've got a couple of fours, you get a, and present your case and then get a request to have it on. And then we decide yes or no.
Well, I think what Mark's striving at is that the fact is we're, the board's going to change and not everybody will all have our you know, have, have our positions on these things. So if we make the bylaw tight, then it's more effective for a longer period of time. So perhaps, Mark, what do you think about if we were to put in? You know, hours limited, you know, we would allow longer term lights to be on as long as they were doing these two, you know, medical services. And it's approved by special permit. So it's both. So it's not somebody that has syringes that can justify having their server, their light on all night. Not that this is going to happen, but you never know. So we, we say, you know, here's, yes, we will allow it in these circumstances and that has to be, you know, approved by the special permitting authority.
Right. So you're creating a criteria to allow it. And then you still go through the special permit process, but it's clear that the intent was to allow it for medical use. And we'll, we'll most likely grant that special permit because we wrote right in there that that's why we grant them.
Yeah.
I agree.
Do we need to give draft language for that?
So how about shall be turned off during the overnight hours from 11 until 6:00 AM unless a special permit is granted for 24 hour medical services?
Well, 24 hour medical services may not require the special permit. So I would, what I would do is reverse them to say hours of operations from 11 to 6:00. Unless, unless it's related to, you know, medical care provided on a 24 hour basis. And approved by special, by virtue of special permit. Does that work?
Medical care, the medical care, does that include veterinarian care as well? Or do you have to say veterinarian care? You know, you have to take your pet or your dog to the vet at three o'clock in the morning like the animal hospital over in, they have one in Waymouth.
And I'm sorry, Barbara, so you said to medical care, related to medical care provided on a 24 hour basis.
Or providing, providing services outside of these hours.
Or if you wrote something to the, just a separate line, it says, some, to the tone of medical establishments providing 24 hour care may apply for a special permit for overnight sign usage.
Yeah.
Or lighted, illuminated signs.
That's good. And Jack, yes, I do think so. I think that people will look at medical And Jack, yes, I do think so. I think that people, um, will look at medical and say veterinarian, that would make sense because it's.
Yeah. And I'm sure that type of an applicant would say women, that includes, that should include animals, pets, whatever.
I think everybody would agree with that.
Okay, so unless medical related care providing 24 hour medical related, providing 24 hour care via special permit. That would. Shall be turned off over the, off during the overnight hours from 11 until 6:00 AM unless medical related care.
I, I just put turned off overnight hours and then almost like put an asterisk. And then underneath with the asterisk, just write establishments that provide 24 hour medical care may apply for a special permit.
Um, I'm going to interject really quickly.
Go ahead.
Sorry, um, my thinking is, and I can, I, the way I have it worded is shall be turned off during the overnight hours from 11:00 PM till 6:00 AM unless medical related care with hours of operation outside of these hours is established, in which case they, the applicant can apply for a special permit because they might be open till midnight. You know what I mean? I don't know. Maybe that's too picky. Can you tell I want another medical facility here in town?
Okay, so unless medical care with hours of operation outside of this timeframe.
Yes.
Why?
In which case the applicant can apply for a special permit. Or which case, oh yeah.
And you should say special permit through the planning to clearly state that the planning board is the special permit granting authority for overnight lighted signs.
Now, do we know if, um, has it been put out to the ZVA yet about the sign by law?
No. Not that I'm aware of.
Should we maybe ask to have that, have it have some input from them or?
I think, yeah, we should probably get this as far as we can take it now. And then maybe we have Kathy circulate a copy to them for their input.
Michelle, I just sent you an email with the wording that I typed out.
Okay.
I don't know if you want that or not, but.
Sure, yeah.
On the 6.6.2.1. Looks like we had a note at the end of that. And I'm just trying to come up with some language regarding the refresh rate.
I don't know much about that at all. I really don't know anything about that.
So it basically, it's like, while these sign is, I think, breaks the rules on the existing by law, but they had a lot of flash and the guy walk around carrying a pizza and whatever. So that's just flat out wrong, but so just to use tamarack liquors or the police station one as an example, if they have a special for something or it should stay up there for so many seconds before it changes. So that it doesn't look like it's a flash or a distraction. It shouldn't be.
Right. I love that. Thank you for describing that to me because that's, that's what it is that bothers me is when they move. Yeah, you're right. It's when they move so quickly.
So then help, what is that timeframe of when you're driving by a sign? Is it 30 seconds? I guess depending on what the speed limit is.
I think this, yeah. Wasn't this one of our concerns about the real estate office down here at 1879 that they had this rolling sign? New housing and people would be looking up and rerunning somebody else?
Yeah.
I know that tamarack does have a sign that turns and says, you know, today we're offering Bud Light at X amount of dollars a case or something like that. That goes back to something else. But it eats up for X amount of seconds so that it's not continually rolling.
Okay, here's the definition. It says the refresh rate of an LED screen is the number of times in a second that the LED screen hardware draws the data. The refresh rate stands for how many times per second redraws the images on the screen is measured in hertz. The more times the screen is refreshed, the smoother the images are in terms of motion rendering and flicker reduction. So if an LED screen is flashed 190, 1,920, 1920 hertz, it means it has refreshed 1,920 times per second.
That's what I was looking up too, Barbara. That's why I said these rates were really high. But everything that I found was also, uh, seemed to be generated from signed companies. Um, so I didn't know if it was.
I believe that that um, refresh that you're talking about is because the sign's creating the illusion of movement. Which I believe is not allowed by our bylaw. So maybe refresh rate isn't the right term. I came up with images must be displayed for at least blank before changing or refreshing. I don't know if refreshing is the right word based on we, we may be creating a loophole. Using the refresh word incorrectly.
Yeah, I wish there was somebody who, um, had some insight on this, like, refresh rate. Because maybe depending on the language, you know, they, somebody could get around it saying, oh, it's not, it's not refreshing. It's, you know, something else.
Well, I think we should, uh, look at what the, I'm gonna, I'm right, I'm right now, I'm in the town of Marion's bylaws to see what they show for um, signage. I must be in the wrong spot because I don't have anything here about signage.
I've got the cover.
Yeah.
Design guidelines in front of me. This is what they have, if you want to listen to this. All signs should be designed to avoid visually competing with buildings on the site. No elements that flash, move, or change in brightness shall be used. Signs that are internally lit shall be minimized. When more than one sign is provided, their design shall be coordinated in terms of graphic style, color, materials. It really, doesn't really speak off very much to what we're talking about here.
Well, they're excluding it right out of the gate. They're saying they don't want any moving signs.
Right.
Flashing signs anyway.
Signage should, should reflect a balance between allowing adequate signage for business identification while protecting the visual aesthetics of the Spring Street area. Obviously, that's that, that seems to be, I mean, once again, I'll send this to all you guys so you see this. That's the extent of it.
Okay.
They've got, um, a lighting, they've got lighting shall be in a style that is compatible and complimentary to the surrounding architectural style and character. Lighting fixtures shall not exceed 11 feet in height in pedestrian areas in a building entrances and 15 feet in height in parking lots. They don't speak at all to time limits to signs around, uh, at least in this particular piece.
Well, I think what we have is a really good start. Refresh rate, man, oh man.
Is it any benefit to go into one of these sign companies and manufacturers and get some input from them? I mean, I'm not sure. Maybe they would be too willing to provide that to us, but I mean, I don't know. How about, uh, Jamie, would is Jamie, what Jamie have?
What about the consultants? What about the planning consultants? We can call them. What's, we, we have to talk about the planner, but okay.
Will Jamie, would Jamie be able to get us that information?
Uh, I don't think so.
He's a civil engineer.
That's his expertise. Uh, so to back up a step in that 6.6.2.1 signs, any part of which moves, flashes or incorporates traveling or animated lights, static images which refresh and all beacons and flashing devices, whether a part of, attached to, or apart from any sign are prohibited. So right there we have static images which refresh are prohibited. So.
We don't need anything else.
We do, because the refresh rate is a million times a second. And that just means it's moving, it's doing something.
Yeah, but we're saying if a static image is which refresh that they're prohibited.
Right, which means it's a I, my understanding of that is it's some sort of an animation. Refreshing means it's animated. Is how I interpret that.
Okay, it's not just the data changing on the screen.
Because it's so fast, I don't think we could, couldn't read it if it was words changing at 1,900 times a second. Or whatever that hers rate or whatever it was, you read the definition of, or Michelle. Um. So. I, I'm just saying, in the first part of the bylaw that we worked on previously, we had in there static images which refresh are prohibited. So that doesn't mean the LED sign is prohibited. They just can't refresh. Meaning animated, uh, at least that's how I take the definition of that. So fast, it doesn't look like it's flashing because it's changing. So the second part of that, that I started the discussion on where we have static and refresh rates, which we thought we needed to add, maybe we eliminate that language. And just put as the second part of this section, LED images must be displayed for at least 20 seconds before changing. So if tamarack has their sign with whatever on sale, it's got to be there for at least 20 seconds. It can only change three times in a minute.
Yeah.
And then again, that's not uh, I'm just throwing something out there. If you said, no, it's too, too quick, I don't care. But I'm just, it's more the language that I'm interested in is so.
Yeah.
We don't want this, these electronic LED signs that have cartoons.
I agree.
I believe that's the refresh rate thing.
Yeah, you know.
Uh, but we acknowledge that there are 12 of these signs in town, so we want to control them a little bit. And so we're acknowledging LED images, but they're just going to be on and displayed. That's what they can have.
Like tamarack's going to.
Changes. 20 seconds later, it can change from Bud Light on sale to.
Then a wine, then a.
Whatever. But it's got to stay for 20 seconds.
Right.
Minimum.
Rather than a running story of things with the people or animals running back and forth across the sign, which people would be attempt, more tempted to look at and follow. Similar to this real estate people, they're showing different housings.
So I just Googled, um, what's the average red light? And it says the average red light is between 60 and 90 seconds. So to Mark's point, if we had this rule in place, somebody sitting at the intersection could see that sign changed potentially three to five times.
You mean the real estate people there here at 1879?
Well, well, in this case, we're talking about tamarack, but yeah, like, you know, they see a sign there that somebody standing at the red light would have a chance to, they'd, in other words, when I first thought 20 seconds, I'm like, gee, that could be really along, you know, that, you know, what's the point of having a sign if nobody can see it changing? But if it's every 20 seconds, that seems fair to me. I mean, off the cuff, I, I guess I haven't done a ton of research on it, but.
And I don't care if it's 15 seconds or 30 seconds. I just think we need a baseline.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Clear about. Go ahead, Michelle.
I like that it fits in, in a minute, three times too.
Yeah.
And originally I thought, let's just say it can't change one, three times a minute, but they could do you know, 29 seconds, 29 seconds and then three times in a minute.
Does an applicant have the opportunity to come back to us and say, no, I, I need it longer or shorter? Because this is what I'm trying to.
No, in, in this instance, we're, we're creating a regulation that should be adhered to by all.
Fine.
And it, you know, if it's so use the police station one. So use the police station when they're putting up information, public safety information sometimes. Maybe we could ask them what they're how frequently they change the sign or the imagery on the sign. And there's probably some science behind that. Let's just say most of these signs that the speed limit is somewhere between 35 and 45. When you go and buy them, you're not parked at a light.
I mean, I could go ask David Tamarack with how he does it and why he doesn't. Who who the company he is who uses? We want to do that. That's.
So probably some sort of science as far as your rate of travel and you'll see it twice. You'll see an image and a change in image, probably if it's between 15 and 20 seconds and time to read and digest what it is if you're approaching. And this, you know, like I said, like 35 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour.
I mean.
There's probably science behind that. We could probably ask a sign company.
Yeah, I mean, I'll find out who Dave uses at Tamarack and what his rationale is for why the sign changes. And then who he uses. And then we can, if we want to go speak.
Okay. Are there any other areas we want to hit on this while we're talking about it before we move on?
Oh, if you go down to 6.6.4.5, the unlighted signs. I think we had touched on that at a previous meeting, and I just kind of put that in there. She'll have no logos or markings. Is there anything else that anybody else wanted to add to that or change?
Nope, that captures it. That's exactly right.
Um, I disagree.
What do you think, Mark?
There's a problem with the first word.
Unlighted?
Yep. So can lighted signs have logos?
We strike the word unlighted. We strike the word unlighted. Signs less than two square feet doesn't need an entry. It's just take up the word unlighted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I thought we were looking to also try to make sure that those small signs are not lighted as well. Was that not?
It it was, but again, I think if you keep it there in the front, it leaves the loophole. Well, lighted ones could have that, right?
Okay. Yeah.
So signs less than two square feet designated entry and egress from parking areas and other necessary directional traffic control, safety related signs shall not be lighted and shall not have logos or markings other than directional markings. How's that?
That's great.
And it, you know, I I don't. The lighted thing doesn't bother me as much because if you have. Let's just use CVS or Walgreens as an example. I think they both have like pickup windows, call it a drive through. And if they had in the back of the parking lot, an arrow that said, enter, and it was illuminated because they stay open till nine at night in the winter.
Right.
Is that something that we want to ban? I think the logos thing and the colors, I.
Well, I think CVS has that is is an illuminated entry sign for to go, but you know, for the to pick up your medication or to get a COVID shot. And I think if you turn that off, it might be difficult for some people figure. So where do I go in the store or what?
Yeah. I think maybe the lighted thing, we just eliminate that and you just so you're controlling any signs less than two square feet to be traffic signs. You can't have logos. I think the colors thing, which we don't speak of, they were silent on colors.
Oh, I did add that under that list.
At the bottom.
Yeah, number five. Because you had said the white lights on a black background.
Right, but that's I think we were talking about the LED signs. What I'm talking about is, you know, you go through like a Wendy's or McDonald's drive through and all their signs are the color of their establishment. They're really not truly traffic sign. Is do we want to address color? Or do you think that that logo thing sort of draws that off enough that it's suffices?
One would hope that would address it, but you never know.
Comment that just came over from a friend of mine that says, um, the colors need to be ADA compliant. That's interesting.
Yeah.
Right. Because some people are colorblind or, um, I don't know. That's an interesting thought. I don't really know anything about that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think black and white would be ADA compliant.
Black and white would probably be fine. Honestly, I'm all about the we should just plagiarize from one of these other towns. Who else can we look at? To see their signage laws.
Well, we did look at quite a few for definitions and see what they were doing as far as these electronic signs because I think we're not the only one trying to manage them.
Right, for sure.
Is there is there a benefit to getting those regulations from the different towns of each one was take a take a couple of them, look at them and come back with what what they're saying they should do? I don't know. I'd be glad to do it.
Well, I guess the question is, this is, um, we're going to be bringing this up for town meeting, right? Or is this going to be for.
Spring town meeting.
Spring town meeting. So we have time. Okay.
Well, I, yeah, we have to keep cracking on it, but um, so I'm just the wheels are turning here and I'm just kind of thinking. So what if you have a company come in? Like I I first I used the CVS and Walgreens, which I think have pretty neutral, like red and white type colors, which are traffic sign colors with a stop sign or whatever. It's not awful or obtrusive. But so what happens when you have the lime green company come in? Or the pumpkin orange company? That now they want to make all the signs around their establishment, even though we spoke to logos. You clearly know that it's their advertisement when they put the pumpkin orange enter sign as instead of a just a regular enter sign.
Is it worth talking to the signage company that does CBS for Wendy's?
No. I don't. We wouldn't even know who they are.
I've got Marshfield's bylaws in front of me and it says, um, no animation and no flashing lights. Flashing shall be defined as changing natural or artificial light or color effects by any means, except as may one occur when panels or messages change on digital electronic billboards. That's interesting. They also limit, um, adult businesses advertising. No signage for that. Interesting.
So how about instead? So at that same 6.6.4.5 about the small signs shall not be lighted in color colors other than and keep it to whether it's white or we want to just say shall be white light background only. So then it'll do away with the lime green and the pumpkin orange. So then it keeps it to directional because this is not advertising. This is directional. This is safety. This is parking. This is, you know.
Right.
Yeah, I think there should be a standard. If it's going to be directional, there should be some standard colors. You can't let them change to their particular colors.
Black and white backlight with black lettering.
Well, maybe red is more easily visible at night.
Red is too much like a stop stoplight. You don't want it to look like the stoplights.
Fine, then make it black and white.
So I can't speak what would be better for the environment. We are a dark sky community. So is it better to have the black background with white letters or white background with black letters? I would think that the black background would produce less light with white letters than that being the the opposite.
Agreed.
I'm way out of my wheelhouse. I don't know much about this at all. So. So Situate has just revised their zoning bylaws as well earlier this year. That's interesting.
I'm trying to find a standard for traffic signs. I just did a little Google search. I came up with a so annual and uniform traffic control devices, which are assigned standards. Kind of like, uh, highway department type things. And maybe that's not the right organization, but there's I'm sure there's one out there that we could use for this. So signs shall have no logos or markings other than directional markings. Any directional traffic control signs that do not meet manual uniform traffic control device standards are not permitted. And you could allow with special permit. So then you could have, you know, the the CBS red and white drive through sign, it's illuminated. You could allow that with special permit, but they'd have to get a special permit. So when lime green one came in, you could deny that special. Based on the grounds that not a standard traffic control color and it doesn't meet the standards of uniform traffic control.
So I'm looking at the the Situate bylaw and it says revolving, moving, flashing, or blinking signs, signs that appear to be in motion, animated signs, or signs with visible moving parts, except for signs which display public service information that prohibited. Signs or parts thereof that contain or consist of animated parts, ribbon streamers, just spinners, or similar moving or fluttering devices, including feather banner and wind flag sign. This is pretty. This is pretty comprehensive. There's a lot here.
What town is that, Barbara?
This is Situate, and I'm going to save this off and send it to you. We just did a merger and none of my emails are even saved. Uh. Okay. Well, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this subject because it seems like we're getting hung up in the weeds here. And it is 8:10. And clearly yours truly is going to waste away if she doesn't have dinner sometime soon.
Agreed. So you made a motion. I'll second it. We'll move on. Just all in favor. Barbara.
Hi.
Shell.
Hi.
Jack, myself. So let's we'll move right along through here. I just want to hit the the planning board fee schedule real quick. And then maybe conclude tonight because we got to meet next week as well. Because next month is screwy month with the.
Holidays.
The Thanksgiving holiday and town meeting, I think screw up the our Veterans Day. So we're meeting on the first and the third week of the month instead of the second and the fourth. We get back to back. So we'll pick up some of this next week. We'll leave off tonight. Michelle, did you want to just give a? Michelle, did you want to just give a quick little update on the changes you made here? Where we're at, I see a couple of strike-throughs on 500 per acre and on the street acceptance.
Are you looking at the rules and regulations language? Is that?
It's the planning board fee schedule. So right in the site plan review, we have minor, major, and then special permit. Development Opportunities District, we have 500 per acre crossed out. It looks like we need some information there or.
Oh, yeah, well. We had started to talk about this last time and I don't think we came to a good conclusion. I think we were just talking about, you know, oh, if they only had 20% lock coverage. You know, let's do a conservation restriction. So I did add that in. But then we, we kind of wanted to have some sort of incentive for that, but I didn't really change the dollar figures because I didn't know. I didn't know what would be.
Well, it looks like that public hearing fee and street acceptance, we still have revisit the item. Couple of unknowns there. How about? I'd really like everybody to go through this over the next week and we'll, we'll try and resolve this all at the next meeting. So we'll just put some time in. And Kathy, do we have, I imagine it's going to be a fairly light agenda for the next meeting? We haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I just think it's that site plan.
The Bud's Good Site Plan?
Yeah.
Have they made any changes that you're aware of?
Um.
Not that we want to discuss it.
I mean, from the original one, they added the filing, but there was a couple of other things. They didn't change the gated in area. But I had talked to the attorney and said, you know, if you're coming in, you might as well just wait. If there's any of additional changes, you can add them all in together. But because I think he said what they're doing now, they don't need it. So I says, well, you can make your case for possibly not needing it, but you know, that would be up to the board.
So is that, that mean there's a chance that we continue?
A chance that you'll continue it?
Chance that they'll continue if they don't have all the information based on what you told them.
Oh, no, they're ready to go.
Okay.
Like I said, they're just going to wait for your decision of what you want added onto the plan. But the one thing that, like the filing that had to be on there.
Okay. And so as far as big items, there wouldn't be anything else added at this point because it's seven days away.
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right. So that means we'll have some time at the next meeting to do this stuff. Will everybody be able to put a little bit of time, maybe an hour over the next week before we convene again?
Yep, okay.
And if anybody wants to send me some edits and I can just add it in, maybe if that works.
Well, the only thing is that I would rather have us talk about the edits before, at the meeting. So we don't get confused because what we're going to be working off is the last draft that you sent. And then we're going to be making changes to that. So people send suggestions, that's okay, but I don't want to spend time reviewing something and then find out that it was already removed or, you know what I mean? Not that there's that much to review here. It looks like we're pretty darn close. It's basically like the special permit. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty easy.
Okay.
Why don't we just have Michelle decide?
Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, so I'm going to, we have design standards on there. I know you guys talked a little bit before the meeting about master plan. You guys were going to try and get some information maybe put together for the next meeting. What was discussed or no?
Not much. I think Jack said that he was at master plan and that they, they shared, Rita shared some information with him.
The Carver.
I mean, Rita handed this out to all of us.
Right. So Jack, you said you scanned those and you could circulate them?
Yes, I was playing, sending to all of you.
Why don't you do that? So then we'll discuss that at the next meeting while we're all looking at that handout.
While we were talking, I pulled up the signage regulations for the town of Duxbury. I can scan that. Also, you can see that which sees be significantly more than what, in all due respect to Carver, that what Carver has.
Okay. Yeah, send them both. And we'll put that on the, the agenda. So we'll have something to discuss about the design standards at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Just make the announcement that our next scheduled meeting is November 4th at 7:00 PM 2021. Kathy, do we have anything else that I've overlooked? And I see Michelle.
Oh, um, I was just going to ask, I know CONCOM has been meeting in person and Board of Health. Are we gonna possibly meet in person?
Yeah, I would like to start to get back into in-person meetings.
Yeah, the master plan met at the, at the police station the other night.
Yeah, CONCOM's meeting there too.
When's the, was the meeting again, the next meeting? What was the date?
Next, next Thursday. Fourth, November 4th. Kathy, who handles the scheduling of the police station meeting room?
Uh, I think it's, her name is Krista. The admin of video.
Can we put our next meeting on the agenda to be in person over there?
I can try it. Let's see if it's available.
I think we'll get more done in person, I think.
I, I certainly think with these the efforts that we're putting into trying to make bylaw changes, I certainly think it would be advantageous to be in person. It's less confusion. Might be wise to bring a laptop though. Because if we're doing some research or we want to look up some stuff, it'd be good if people had those as well, even though we're, that is a convenience of doing the Zoom thing that we can, everybody can look at their computer screen and look up something pretty quick, but.
Yeah.
All right. So that said, I think that concludes tonight's business.
Wait, I have some more questions.
Go ahead.
You know, I always have two questions. My first thing is, I wanted to find out, I apologize, was not able to attend the Board of Select meeting on Monday. Again, my company just went through a merger, so it's been a little hairy. Did we have a conclusion on the planner position? Do we, do we have, what's happening with that? What?
No.
They tabled it.
Oh, boy, am I sad I missed that meeting. Okay. I guess, do we know why that was tabled?
I do, but I'm not going to discuss it right now.
Um, but it was public, so I can go back and watch the meeting myself. So, okay.
Yeah, I don't think there was a lot of discussion other than they just tabled it.
Yeah, okay. Well, God knows we need it. We need it sooner rather than later. And I think anybody that's looking at the things that are coming through this community understand we've got to get some professional help in there with some of this stuff.
Yep.
Um, okay. And then my other, my other comment, and this is not a question, this is just a comment. You know, with everybody losing power, it really highlights the issue for me about the importance of underground utilities. And I know we had a subdivision, a small subdivision that we approved recently. I recollect it was up by the high school in that general vicinity. So it would be in one of those areas that was very affected by this recent storm. And I don't think we have it in our bylaws to require underground utilities, nor do I think it's doable in every situation. But I just kind of wanted to raise the issue because I think as we look forward towards, you know, more resiliency with this climate changing and stronger and stronger storms coming around the pipe. You know, we really need to be thinking about some of this stuff and it bothers me that.
Yeah, I, I think most of the stuff that we've done, Barbara, has been underground. The only one that wasn't was Rachel's Way because they already had poles in because it was an extension of it existing.
Okay.
So they were, they were only adding 100 feet and they already had the poles for the first 200 and something feet.
Okay.
So everything else I believe that we've done has been underground.
Okay.
And, and you're right, that should be a requirement. And it shouldn't be waived.
Yep. Well, just if we all, if we all kind of think about it in that context, maybe the next time it comes around or anybody that's watching, that, you know, the engineers and so forth that watch these kind of shows will understand that it's going to be important to us, that they really consider that before we see the plans. I'm going to probably be a little tougher about that if I have a chance to in the future. It does concern me.
Yep.
And that's it, Mark. I'll let us go eat.
Hey, I just, just a quick, I just have a quick comment. You know, Mark, you know better than I do, but you know, at the master plan meeting the other night, Ari, who sat next to me, talked about the planner, the person that they'd gone through and selected this one particular person. And then at the Board of Select on the other night, I thought, unless I misunderstand, I thought they agreed.
A motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So much for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Kevin, have we stopped the?